But maybe bring back a few pictures of what is actually the structure looks like on there. It's hard to see it even Google Maps of what is actually on there. But that would be my suggestion would be to table the whole issue instead of having her more out of pocket expensive revisiting this on a separate issue.
Yes, I think that would be best because what you're doing now is basically recommending approval or not to the county commission on this. And so if you're splitting it, you're going to be sending one section of that to the county commission.
Correct.
Then having to move the other section as well.
I don't want to, you know, obviously I don't want to cost any more money than when we have to on somebody for, you know. So I think if that's good, I'd like to table this issue if that's how people are going to do it.
I'm fine providing a little more detail on that.
Yeah, just the deed that's encroaching into Seville is, I'm just saying just knowing that.
And ultimately utilities, we're the exact utilities running there, so we're not, we're not encroaching on anything like that. I mean, I know that, I have a feeling that they're, if we're going to be anywhere, they're going to be in the center of the road. But I want to be 100% before I give my okay.
Sure. And I have that information.
Okay.
You're supposed to be.
Okay. Right, right. So. So do I make a motion to, like, go ahead and make a motion to table this until?
Pending utilities, study on it.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion to table this pending study on utilities for Seville. Do I hear a second?
I don't remember if you have a question.
Yeah, we need, we need to make sure all of, all of the ideas are covered in the motion.
So I'll make a motion to table it for further research on the deed of encroachment on the property. Also, are utilities, is there anything else that we're considering on that?
So, nice, thank you.
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a vote, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
All those opposed? If they're in favor, we get studies.
Thanks, Buzz.
Thank you. Okay, we go on to item D, approval recommendation to the White Plains County Commission petition for vacation of abandoned road easement petition. We'd like vacation of a 60-foot easement right of way, existing county road, BLM number 38427, which runs through the north and west side of the Aecon 010690-45. And the accessory description is parcel, north map number 450, file number 283268, portion of northwest 1th, section 27, township 16 North, rain 63 east. Physician is Diamond Ely, LLC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. Richard W. Diego, St. Peter's South Jones, Montezlans, that, I hear, they have to act. We are seeking the vacation of the easement as described. I would like to go over where we'd like to certainly work with the gentleman who's concerned about the access. Certainly willing to work with him so he can certainly maintain it. But with that, I agree, I think there's other questions you might have.
So I guess I'm just a little unclear where this road actually is in comparative. I was able to pull up again Google Maps on here and I'm very, very familiar with that area out there. And there's lots of bigger roads going everywhere on here. None of those roads were on this map, so I'm having a hard time of understanding where this abandonment is.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I can point to, we do have our surveyor there, basically.
I believe you have these are, I believe they'll be this. Okay, so it's basically this, this wash then.
There's a ready show, a ready, ready.
Yeah. Okay, okay, this is, this is much better. And I don't know if we can share with you guys or not on this.
That's great.
It's pretty enough access though to.
Yeah, where, where they travel from. Do you have an answer for that?
I'm sorry?
You were great, you were great, you were the vote. So you go on the road through here, is that what you're onto, an abandonment?
Correct, that road, and I believe there's this, there's a movement that goes across here. And we can't connect it, there's no facility, I'm sure, but that does not mean it much whatever. That is.
But you're bringing, you're bringing in a dead end in this road.
This is a distant, this is a, they come in here.
Perhaps sort of that around.
Self mineral. This, this is all paved. None of this is destructive, this is all raw.
I think, I think just to be careful, I think we probably better be a little bit more hopeful so that we can put these in the mix.
No, I agree.
I think, I think we need, I can't show the permit. I, I get interested. Can I, Mr. Douglas, may I ask, what's, what's the gain for them? What, why, why are you talking?
This is, this was intended to be, I'm sorry, a little family.
Big map? And then fill that out, is that going to help us understand things better?
So it's just a family, for the family, a refuge.
She's, he's talking.
Right. We're just actually trying to get a couple of little, I say cabins, just to come up to Ely enjoy the seasons. So just family compound.
Okay, okay. So, so the intent is to, to build some type of structures up there that are residential?
Yes, yeah, small, like a cabin.
Is there any of that, please, we repeat them before returning to be able to hear that?
Mr. Attorney, can you hear to this?
Is he there?
Shane, are you there? Shane?
Yes, I can hear you quite enough.
Oh, okay.
I can probably hear the individuals presenting, I can hear the board members.
Okay, well, that's pretty good that you could hear us when we're over there, so.
So if you could speak a little bit louder, please, so that our attorney can hear what your.
Yeah, just if you could present what you had just said, just so the attorney can hear what your proposal is.
Sure, again, for the record, we are proposing to vacate the, I know we can't see the right of way, but right of way is described in the agenda. And this is simply for a family compound at the end of the day. And again, we'll go on record that we will work with the gentleman here that's concerned about maintaining the trails. We'll be happy to that, we want to enjoy that as well. And that's simply at this time.
Thank you.
So you own the property on?
It's, it's.
On this side.
Yes.
Of it. And so you own all of this?
Correct.
And, and there are people that utilize this. Okay, I can see an issue of if you have neighbors close by that utilize that road quite a bit with some complaints about it, so.
I have a quick question, is there a right of way on the backside of all of those houses?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, not, not to my knowledge, adjacent to the back of that?
Yeah.
Uh, no, there's, I mean, they're referring to this line here.
Correct, where the subdivision was at, there's no rather. So there's, so right now, there's no capability of accessing those back roads, those back.
There's a 8-foot easement here to White Plain County that cuts through this parcel.
Okay.
For that purpose, that will be perhaps two feet. But there's of course a building here, so you can't get access there.
Right.
There's nothing here, there's no other access other than probably here. And rest of trails, correct?
Yeah. Okay, and so. So I guess, I guess I will voice my concerns. Obviously, I think it's the same as everybody else's is access, that is a major part of access to what is, and I, what I consider a gold mine for Ely. It's Murray Summit, or Murray, yeah, Murray Summit, Murray Mountains, all that, Ward Mountains, everything up there, which is huge. That's a major recreation site for Ely. It's, it's a great access point for all of Ely to, to the mountains for a lot of people. I feel that if there was some adjustments and we had some, some work done to, to create a better access point and one that would be acceptable to, to what, what you guys would like, as well as what.
Sure.
Everybody else in the community would like. I think that would be something that could be, could be looked at. However, I certainly, certainly will not say yes at this point in time until I see something set in stone and some, some surveying done that's done appropriately. My other concern is access to all of the homes on the Mineral Heights area. I do know that there is road access back there right now. And so I feel like that's something that needs to be kind of looked at, whether that be some type of an alleyway or something that would give some access to, to the back of those places. And the, the main reason I say that is for fire protection, that's probably one of my biggest concerns. There's a lot of homes up there.
These parcels here.
Yes.
Not, maybe these, but.
Yes.
There's some terrain here, but these are.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So those, those would be concerns for me, since.
So I, I mirror a lot of that. I, I not only think that it's a severe impact for the ATVs, the, all of that stuff, but we have been working very hard, there's a bunch of group of people working very, very hard to get trails done in this area and going out and establish trails, not only for the ATVs, but also for mountain bikes and everything else. And I, and I know this road very well. This, this is a good major access point to get up into those recreational areas that they've been working on diligently for, for quite a long time. And a lot of volunteer hours have been put in to try to get those projects done. I certainly want to, I never want to deny the, the family or, you know, their property, but I have the same concerns. I would like to see you come back with a viable solution that works with not only this group here on their Trails Alliance, but also on the recreation of the mountain biking and all that stuff. And so, I mean, we, you can carve in another road and make that go up and around, but is it going to be a, a trail that is not only good for the ATVs, but is also conducive to how the mountain bikes keep using that too? And that's, that's my biggest concern is we want to make this a multi-recreational area around here. That's kind of what we're known for. And if we're cutting off access to these areas we've been working on so hard on, or I shouldn't say us, these individuals, then that's my biggest concern. Andy has a valid point also on the fire access on the backside of Mineral Heights. And that, you know, this is all raw land that we are very, very careful about not letting it go up in smoke. And if, and if something does happen accidentally or whatever, we need an area where we can protect these structures back here from any wind that comes through and pushes those fires to there. So I'm with you on that one. I definitely would like to see you guys work with the Trails Committee on, on figuring out how to alleviate that problem of access. I don't have an issue per se of giving you your land. I don't want to say that at all, but I do have an issue of closing that down to where it's not accessible at all for everybody to get in there.
Yeah, so unless we see a solid plan of what is going to, going to happen to bypass that area and continue that, that road access around that property, then I, I can't say that we can really agree on, on closure.
So is there any thoughts that you have on anything that you can suggest? Or is, is this a viable solution for your group, I mean, just represent your group?
I'm representing my group.
Okay.
I don't know, if you look, when you looked at this map, there's two access points, the whole block gap road. And this closure would be right in the middle of his property. So it closes off both accesses going up to the water tank. And that's just beyond the water tanks where that trail system actually begins. The Forest Service boundary, and then goes all the way up to connector Trail, the ski hill over Murray, some campground, and then down to, or around to the upper terrace and goes all the way around to the Ward Mine District.
Correct.
Back down into Spectral Valley. He's right smack in the middle of that right of way, which is going to cut us off. And if you look, there are no other trails around that. And, and it actually, it cuts off the west side of you, the access to Northern Mountain, if you close that. It totally cuts off the access off there. And I, I understand what he wants to do, and why, but this was turned over to the county 37 years ago. And certainly, when, when you people purchased this property, you knew that that was public access. And we oppose closing to public access. And we're for creating new trails, preserving old trails, and maintaining and restoring trails. And we, we just don't like to see closure. GOM's been real bad about that, Forests was getting up better about. That's pretty much it, does waive its access on, on the western side of town for access out there.
I, I, I move that we table this barring we get some more information on a suggested access site that would work with the Trails Group. And I, and I literally mean work with the Trails Group. I think that's going to be your biggest winner if you guys can manage to do that. And then also the fire protection side on that. I, I, I think, I think there could be a happy medium here, we just, we just need to find it. And, and I think everybody here recognizes how important the trails have worked so hard in this community and how big of an asset it is to our community, that we can't let it go without having something in paper, something in stone that we can sit here and look at it more intelligently.
Understood, respect that, sure.
Yeah, you know, we can't let go unless we have a solution.
So, Mr. Chairman, would I go through staff to arrange this, or can I just work with the gentleman or?
Well, at any of this point, I'm sorry, I think there's a few people that you're going to have to work with on it. And I think that there's, and I wish, actually Buzz was here because probably Buzz would have a good information of who, who's in charge of that. Not only your guys, it's, we know that you're in charge of your group, but also with the Trails Committee, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that would be Kelly Ernest.
Yeah, Kelly Ernest.
Kelly Ernest, I believe, is involved with that. So I would like you to try due diligence in getting out to all these people to, to work with them and bring back a solution that we can approve, because I, I can't approve this right now, but I, I'm with you. I would like to see a table to that point.
For 30 days or 60 days, or what is the?
That's up to you, if you feel like you can get it surveyed and get some, some viable options to us. And I, and I think right now, as long as we get something from, from the White Plain.
High Desert Trail.
High Desert Trail, and then the Great Basin Trails Alliance, I believe. Is there another group that we're missing or anything that we would like to have somebody write a letter to from that group or, or attend to, that suggests that you would work with them and, and we're in good correspondence? Because we, we, we can't pretend we know these routes as well as they do. They've spent lots of time on them.
I believe.
Tour and rec. Tour and rec.
Right, tour and rec and the Convention Center, Kyle, or rather, the Convention Center would be a very good contact of those people that are, have been involved with all of these, with these trails. I think that that would actually probably be the easiest contact for you to get the rest of those names of who's all involved with that would be Kyle at the Convention Center. Yes, George?
I was going to say, if you designate one access, well, you should take care of all the groups, as long as they agree, rather than have two or three different trails across the gentleman's property.
I, I agree completely.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay.
We need to have, we, we, we recognize how important these groups have put into this, and we want to make sure that they all agree to this access point.
Okay, should be just one, rather than three or four.
I agree.
That would hinder the property.
Hundred percent, I agree. Again.
But it has to be a trail that everybody can access, you know, just, just an ATV, I'm sorry.
Remember too, this thing is on two sides, is bordered by BLM. So if you alter that, that right of way, you need to talk to them. That was, that's something that BLM gave to the county. So if you alter that, when it goes onto BLM land, they're going to have to give you your approval as well.
Okay.
So, just, just to keep that in mind.
So I, I'm sorry, we don't have an easy solution for you, isn't it? Unfortunately, I'm just speaking for myself, but we are trying to look out for everybody here, especially for the people that have put in so many hours, so. And we are, I, myself, I'm willing to hear whatever you have proposed.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think we can find a happy medium, there's, there's, there's no problem here. We just, we just need to do our due diligence and make sure we.
We welcome that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I, I have a motion, yep, I moved, as said.
Will it be, sorry, for 30 days or 60 days, or can we set, or is it, how does that work?
Shane, is there a limit on how long the site can be tabled for?
No.
Okay.
What, what would be a good time for you?
I don't know, with the holidays and everything, the gentleman.
Two months.
Yeah.
Six days.
So 60 days would be okay with you then?
So we scheduled it for our January meeting.
January meeting.
That would give you time to work on it.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. So the motion is to table this until we get further studies on the solution?
Until January, or January meeting.
Till the January meeting.
So we're talking about the solution of right of way? And then I also want to address the fire on the side, the fire break or fire potential, something, whatever. I don't leave that to wildland firefighter or.
The solution is.
Something that's.
BLM and everything else.
Yep.
So, okay, we have that as a second. So, okay, Leah seconds, and I'll take a vote to table this until, till January. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
The man's discussion regarding Golden Coast and City of Ely and White Plain County. Any more ideas, guys?
This is a letter, great letter.
Yes.
So when, or which, which one did you say that we were on?
We're in. Item E.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself here.
I have nothing, nothing for discussion on, on item.
Same here, Brad ending?
No.
Okay, if we go on to, and to item F, draft the letter to City of Ely to deal in issues with the MND, how we have any free intersection, and encouraging the City of Ely to work within DOT to come up with a solution. And read the letter, it's a good letter.
I love the letter, is, just the point where we're at now, is it just submitted to the county and?
Submitted to the city actually.
It beat the city.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this letter will go in the city council.
Do you need to make one correction at least in the spelling of Carol's name?
Oh, sorry, Carol.
Yes, I'm, I've probably lost control a lot of my life times, so don't worry about it. Just fix it on there.
Yes, okay, nice, yeah.
So I, I like the, the letter, I, I move to approve the letter to submit to the city council.
I just have one quick question. If we're going to have revised to just get your name right on there, how are we all going to get it signed? Should we just send it via email?
When, when it's ready, she'll let us know.
Okay.
You know, let us know, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the letter, you there as a second?
Second.
Okay, motion as a second. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The letter is approved.
I, I hope that, George, is this going to help with the, the issues you have out there?
We'll see if they take care of it, okay? It's been going on for months, no excuse.
After I go through it, I knew exactly what you were talking about.
So onward.
You're a slow driver, Carol.
I did it on purpose, slow.
You should have taken the ADA access.
Okay, honored to item G, discussion, municipal action approval of minutes from Regional Planning Commission held on October 23, 2020.
That makes exceptional.
And I found, if you.
Anybody?
It makes a new town.
Seeing changes in there?
On page three, towards the bottom, it says Brad Simpson responded, that they were residential, and it's that sentence after that. It's sort of, I think there's a word like that. You would really like to more about what they are, I think it's know, you would really like to know it more.
About what?
Right at the bottom.
Fifth line from the bottom.
You see my name, the weapon?
What page?
Page three. Where it says Brad Simpson's.
I think, I think.
Know more.
You know more.
Yeah. And then on page four, I have a question more. Maybe I can remember what it was for. I guess, I guess the, just in case they were ever disbanded, I, I'm not sure if that they had that.